All right, we will call the regular Board of Education meeting for the month of November to order. And a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nickram.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mrs. Bookta.
Here.
Mr. Chaney.
Here.
All right, if you all will join me for Pledge Allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In all fairness, the flag has been in that position for 25 years.
And I was looking at the guy, well, thank you very much. We will now read the vision and mission statement, which is why we are here and why we are doing what we're doing. The vision statement of the School District of Fort Atkinson is to achieving distinction in all that we do. Our mission statement is cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. With that, we will move on to comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have anyone sign?
We have one speaker this evening, Dale Prisk.
All right, Mr. Prisk. I'm assuming I don't have to read the rules. Thank you. If you just approach when you're ready and then make sure you leave your, or give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Dale Prisk. I live at 1212 Comanche Court here in Fort Atkinson, longtime resident. I just wanted to come up tonight, rather than come up and complain to everybody about things that we've discussed multiple times. I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing kids to still go to school with masks on that are in elementary school. It's great. I think that the more I've considered it, maybe I'm starting to come around, and these masks aren't that bad. You know, I mean, it's obviously not that hard to communicate with somebody with masks on. We do it all the time in different lines of work, so it's not a big deal, right? So, no issues. I thought while we're at it, though, why stop at masks, right? Kids might just learn better with headphones on, so let's put those on, right? And then, you know, because I heard from some parents in the community that some of the kids thought that teachers' classes were just too loud, so we should really just try to accommodate that with headphones. And then other teachers told me that they were concerned that some of the kids' parents had light-sensitive eyes, so we should get some sunglasses on as part of the curriculum to get everybody through this. And I just think it's great. I think that we are so far ahead of the other communities that don't have masks on their kids. I've really come around. Obviously, cases in neighboring cities are spiking and just raging out of control. But you guys are all keeping us safe, and obviously, everybody's doing what's best for the kids, not doing what's most convenient for them, or easiest for them, or things that are just a little easier to deal with in their social circles if they just bow and nod their heads. So, I think one of the things I really think hopefully we can just drill in after this whole mask experience is over is stop teaching free thinking, stop teaching individuality, stop worrying about that stuff. Just really, really focus on complacency. Follow the leader. Don't question authority. Sit down and shut up, right? So, I think we're all doing a great job of that. So, with that being said, thank you.
Are there any, any other speakers?
There are not.
All right, move on to consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Yes, Robert's Rules provides for the consent agenda, listing several items for approval by the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, the consent agenda includes Item A, minutes from the October 26, 2021 regular and closed session meeting; Item B, Board Policy Update 30.2; Item C, Personnel Appointment, Resignation, Retirement, and Transfer Requests. This evening, that includes the following: An appointment of Jennifer Buck, 1.0 FTE Technology Education Teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle School, as well as a resignation request accepted upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of $1,500 from Thomas Pamperin, 1.0 FTE English Teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Then, Item D, Authorization to Dispose of Equipment No Longer Useful to the District; Item E, Gifts to the School District. This evening, that includes a donation from the Ball Corporation of $1,000 to help purchase advanced manufacturing equipment for high school technology education programs; a donation from the Space Saver Corporation of $5,000; a donation of VFW Post 1-8-7-9 of $200; a donation, another donation from VF Post 1-8-7-9 Women's Auxiliary, the amount of $300. All of those to help the advanced manufacturing equipment for the high school technology education program. And then also a donation from Ryan McGlynn and Adra Han in the amount of $1,000 for the Lorraine Kneedecker Project for Luther Elementary. Then, Item F, Budget Transfers; and finally, Item G, the Payment of District Bills and the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Are there any discussion, would any board member like to pull anything out of the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, then we can go ahead and entertain the motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Nickram, a second by Mr. Paul. And a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta.
Yes.
Mr. Nickram.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes. All right, and we're going to move forward to, Mrs. Oakley will be giving us the summer school program report that we've been waiting for.
Yes, the much-awaited summer school report. Next month, she'll be doing the Summer School 2022 Report. So, thank you for your patience in working through some complicated agendas, Mrs. Oakley. We've been anxious to get your report.
I'm really happy to be here to finally talk about summer school. I think this is the first time we have done summer school in November when it's snowing out, so. Way back in summer, we had a really great summer school session, and I'm excited to share some information with you about it. As a whole, I always like to start a little bit about our summer school programming. We have grown and changed over the years. We offer an elementary program for students in grades K through 8, which is a traditional summer school program that goes daily from 8 to noon. And then we also offer elementary camp offerings. In addition, we offer a non-competitive online signup process that parents really appreciate. We offer maintenance and intervention offerings in math and reading alongside courses that are balanced across lots of different interest areas: physical activity, academic, technology, art, game-based, thematic, et cetera. We work really hard to keep our course offerings up to date and exciting. At the secondary level, we offer camps, and those are very popular for our older students because they're much less commitment of their time, especially for students who are really busy. Camps are shorter length, shorter commitment. We offer high school credit recovery that uses a blended structure with some online, as well as teacher support. We offer, we also offered reading, writing, and math intervention at Fort Atkinson Middle School this last summer, as well as a new genre of summer school camp, booster camps, which are specifically aligned to a course at the high school or at the middle school, something like accelerated art, AP classes. And those have been very popular of like a jumpstart to the school year. Health and safety are really important to us in summer school. For parents, this is probably all behind-the-scenes work, but I always like to remind that we take our summer school safety very seriously. We do do an open house that helps parents know that their kids know their schedule for our littlest students, as well as a mini kindergarten welcome program. All of our students enrolled in summer school are in our student information system, including health and emergency information. Our staff wear badges. Our littlest kids wear badges with their schedule on them, so they find themselves not in the right place. Someone can help them find their right place. We do do lock doors, drills, bus pickup and drop-off. And then really exciting was take-and-go lunches this summer, so I'm really excited. Christmas here. People loved the take-and-go lunches, as well as breakfast in the classroom this year. Before we get into the stats, I always like to spotlight some of our new offerings. This summer, we had a new music class for the littles over here at Luther. We also had a one-time offer of Safety City. Very interesting, in summer 2020, the one question I got the most about the modified summer school program was, "Well, my mini kindergartner is not going to be able to get Safety City." So, we made a one-time exception where we offered Safety City to first graders and really appreciated Beth Martin being flexible to help us make that happen so that no one missed Safety City. We added a really cool digital photography and video creation class, and that's what that wow is. The kids did some time-lapse photos. We did a keyboarding class, which was a parent request that was actually very popular. And we inserted a class called Video Game Design, and that was at Purdy for our older students. We had lots of new camps this summer, everything from orchestra to flag football to gymnastics. We had girls' basketball camps. We had a Harry Potter steam camp, a library reading program camp, oceanography, a summer book club in partnership with the Dwight Foster Library. And I'll talk a little bit about Steam Academy and jumpstart classes in a minute. At the high school level, we had some nice new offerings as well. We offered a jazz camp, as well as a show choir combo camp, and we had a swimming and conditioning camp, which was new and very well-received, as well as a class called the Student Leadership Challenge Camp, which was really appealing to those students who are looking for some leadership roles in student organizations. We also offered an accelerated art class and a new camp called the Executive Function Family Camp, which focused on organization, school skills, that students actually dual-enrolled with their families. Overall, we had 139 course offerings, our total offerings for summer school. Little bit down from our 2019 number, but some of that was just related to staffing. Some, some teachers were really in a place where they weren't wanting to teach summer school last summer. So, we, I think that's mostly due to that, as well as we had a little bit of a lower enrollment because our overall enrollment is a little bit lower, so we felt like that was actually a good place to land for summer school. So, 139. Our total individual student enrollment was 1,398 students. So, I always like to tell people, and we have almost 1,400 Fort Atkinson individual students that touch our summer school program. That's really something we're proud of. And we also are proud of that sometimes people think it's all elementary. And if you look at that pie chart, while elementary is half, almost half of our, of our program, we do offer some nice, robust offerings for our older students as well. And I know people would ask a question about how we compare to normal enrollment. So, this chart shows we usually hover right around that 1,400 mark, with our highest point being 1,472 in 2017. This year, coming in at 1,398, we were really pleased. We didn't know how families would feel coming off of the, of last year, so we were really pleased with that enrollment. A little bit about our staff demographics. We had 103 total staff members. Out of those 64 were in the traditional programming at Luther and Purdy. 31 of them were camp staff and eight were credit recovery. We have roughly two-thirds of the staff in summer school this year that were our Fort Atkinson employees and one-third that are hires from other school districts. We're very excited this year. We accepted the challenge of wanting to offer something in August. That's not been something we've done before in summer school. We offered our very first, our School District of Fort Atkinson, Steam Academy. We had about 65 kids enrolled in grades 4 through 8. Our theme was Rock the Boat, and we built robots, underwater robots, and then raced them and did a bunch of activities at the middle school pool. So, you can see some photos of the kids soldering, doing plans, putting together the robots. Even from our littlest to our big kids, they all worked together, and then at the end, they did a couple days of competition. So, it was a one-week camp, really, really well-run by the team of teachers who took the leap with me to say, like, "Hey, you want to do something totally different in August?" So, we had some really great team, thanks to the middle school for hosting, and it's definitely something we will do again this summer. We also put in jumpstart classes for our littlest. So, we had a first start, a jumpstart to school for first grade and a jumpstart to school for second grade. And those were specifically giving families whose child needed a little bit of a boost before school started a chance to do a soft entry, to get re-acclimated with some of those school skills. And we hosted those here at Luther, and parents were very appreciative who took advantage of that opportunity. So, we always do a parent survey at the end, and we have very good response from our parent survey in numbers, as well as lots of positives. Everything from appreciating our course offerings to the organization of the program. Really, people love the bus service from Rockwell and Berry, as well as the registration, and lots of thank-yous for the take-and-go lunch. We always get some suggestions for new classes, and that is the number-one place we work really hard, that if people put that on the wish list, we work really hard to try to make it happen the next summer. And the other, the only other thing that we continue to hear of is challenges with drop-off and pickup. We have a lot of parents who aren't used to the Purdy-Luther drop-off pickup, you know, patterns. And we have some ideas, again, to try to help people understand more, but it's just always kind of a little bit of a learning curve that first week of summer school. So, we had, we were really proud. We had 94, just shy of 95% of parents saying we met or exceeded their expectations, which is our, we want families to feel really happy with the programs we offer. So, as we think about this next summer, recruiting staff is really a high priority for me. As we all know, teachers are under a lot of demand with student learners who had an interrupted year last year. So, I'm doing everything I can to make summer school appealing for them as a professional, to engage with kids in a really fun environment, to showcase maybe some of the gifts and talents they don't use every day, which is fun. We continue to research new camp and course offerings, as well as continuing to maximize community partnerships. Our Fort Atkinson community really loves to partner with us, and so we continue to explore ways that we can be more connected to the community during summer school. So, a couple just quick brag shots. So, I always like to say whether it was learning to sew your own apron or cinch sack. So, just as an interesting story, we had eight sections of sewing. Sewing was very popular this summer, so. Sewing, improving your reading skills, tumbling fun, creating wearable art, building Lego creations, having scrapbook fun, eating creations in culinary camp, making armor using anvils, or fishing in angler education camp, and then getting a lunch to go. It was an awesome summer. So, just a shout-out to my teaching staff, the summer school support staff, the buildings and grounds team, DJ and his tech team, the nutrition department, my team in the DI office, as well as Mandy's team in the HR office, Lisa Hollenberger and the People's Services Team, the summer school principals, Brian Bosch, a new principal for us at Purdy this year, Dave Geiger, Matt Wolf, Jenny Stotts, Dan Halverson, Brad Gaffert, and Adam Rousseau, and then most importantly, our parents and students who joined us for summer school. So, with that, I can answer any questions that you might have about summer school.
I don't have any questions, but my kids love summer school. They love all the different things, so you guys do a really, really good job.
We joke that our best, we always know we did well when parents are like, "Our kids can't choose. There's not enough slots."
Exactly.
Perfect. We like to make it a little hard, so.
Well, you do very well.
Thanks.
Can you take me a little bit on the timeline when, when a new course introduction happens? Does it come from a parent survey? Does it come from teacher? Where does this come from, and how does it go for implementation?
Yes, yes, and yes. So, we, if we get a request from families, so like the keyboarding class, then what I do is I, when I reach out to staff, which starts in January, it's always that thing where like after Christmas, people are like, "I'd love to start thinking about summer school." It's the one time where you're like, "Hey, summer's right around the corner." So, I advertise the wish list of classes, and I offer some help in developing those classes. So, sometimes there's a teacher who wants to teach summer school but really doesn't know what they want to teach. So, that's the first place they go. If I don't find anyone who bites, at that point, I post and I hire, recruit and hire for the position. So, that was a big change for us when we first kind of changed leadership. We decided that we were offering the courses we wanted, and we would find the teachers that wanted to teach them. So, like our video game class, our photography class, like there wasn't someone on staff who either had those skills or was wanting to teach summer school. So, we seek out, we get a lot of brand-new educators who love the fact that they're getting some experience. And it's just fun to find people who have really nichey, like interesting, interesting skill areas. So, teachers can also propose a class. So, if teachers come and say, "I have an idea for a class about," then we work with them to get that on. That's what keeps our offerings fresh. We always find people are excited to see the list of classes, to find out like what made the list. And it's, it's a fun process. It starts in January, and we do that all the way through spring break, right before the signup launches.
Sure. And do you typically see higher enrollment with the newer classes, or just kind of touch, like, all over the board a bit?
It's really interesting. You have some like oldies and goodies, like Games, Games, Games at Purdy that always fills, which always just, Rona actually knows a lot about Games, Games, Games. She may have taught that class once. And she did it as an overload, as I begged her to, because we had like six sections of Games, Games, which I always think is a testament to Deb Garcia, who teaches that class. But, and then sometimes the brand-new class is really popular. So, we have some classes that we always run, like Minecraft always has 10 or 12 sections. Some people like, kids like to take the same class every summer.
Yeah.
That's just like, like, and some kids will try whatever's new and exciting, so it's great. We just try to keep classes small, try to balance, so that teachers really have that optimum environment to be with kids and kids have that chance to be seen and develop those really good relationships with a summer school teacher.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mrs. Oakley? Or comments, or? All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Oakley.
Hey, thanks so much.
Yay, we finally got it.
Yeah.
All right, moving forward, we'll go ahead with the, I believe Mr. Duncan is going to propose a new, or is he, he hasn't had to speak.
He's here.
Mrs. Oakley is here, as is Mr. Duncan, the instructor from the high school. Should the board have any, any questions regarding the potential for a new course proposal?
Well, it's our pleasure to bring a new course proposal for the high school this evening for a chocolateeering and baking course. Mr. Duncan here has really done an outstanding job of building that program at Fort Atkinson High School. He and I had had a lovely conversation probably a year ago where we talked about students who were very, very excited about taking his culinary classes had a gap between Intro to Foods and World Kitchens before they could enroll in Pro Start. And at that time, Kevin had shared that he had an idea about exploring some of the baking end, which is not something that we had a full course of. So, I'm really excited to see Kevin and his colleague bringing that forward this evening. Kevin's here to answer any questions you might have about the course.
I didn't have any questions specifically other than, is there, is there a notion or maybe a plan in the future to sell the things that these students are making?
Yeah, well, we would be able to do that. Any baked goods, we are able to sell. And so, we could do it like within the school or community for fundraisers, things like that. That would absolutely be an option.
If I'm not mistaken, there's actually some.
I was going to say a shameless plug.
There's some pumpkin bread for sale.
I was actually setting up the shameless plug, because I didn't know about this.
It was exciting to see that email come through, because that's exactly what that, you know, that program is designed to do, and it's very exciting.
I'm extraordinarily proud of that program. I think that, you know, we're, it's, you know, it's giving kids an applicable skill and a skill that's not necessarily something you just, you know, it's a natural skill, especially with like having the patience and having the, you know, the want to do it, to do it. There are a lot of people out there who just don't want to ever make food, so I'm proud of it. So, any questions for Mrs. Oakley or Mr. Duncan?
Can we join?
I think there is a fondue next year at some point, I've heard, so.
I think I'd be okay with that. No.
All right, seeing no further discussion, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
We can go ahead and consider the motion before us.
Be resolved that the following new high school course proposal be placed on the table and considered for approval at the December board meeting. Baking, pastries, and chocolateeering.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mrs. Reynolds, and all those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed? And that passes. Looking forward to some chocolates. Moving forward now, we have Dr. Abbott will give us a strategic plan update slash data review.
Yeah, good evening again. I'm happy to touch base with, with the board and our larger community related to our new strategic plan goals. I mean, we always like to ground back in our vision and mission, and I always appreciate that we, that we share those at the beginning of each meeting. But I think as we work through this presentation together, this idea of achieving distinction in all we do and cultivating an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community rings true in, in the plans that are well underway across our school district. So, as the board and others are aware, our new strategic plan is centered around three different specific goals or goal areas. And this evening, we're going to focus on the primary academic goal, which is that all schools, as well as the district as a whole, will achieve a State of Wisconsin Accountability Rating of significantly exceeds expectations. rating of significantly exceeds expectations no later than the 2025-26 report card with evidence of annual growth. We also, as we talked about rolling out the new strategic plan and as we put it in place in August, we're clear with you and clear with the public that as we gather learning data throughout the course of the year, that is the information that we use to help frame, hone, tailor instruction for subsequent instruction, that that would be made available to you. And so the board has had this information, as has our staff, through our One Team Playbook newsletter that went out a couple of weeks ago, but the public would be able to access that very same information via this presentation on our website and be able to get to that data information there as well. So I would like to shift gears, and related to our academic goal is the public release just Tuesday of the updated 2020-21 Wisconsin school report cards. So this year, our school district had an overall accountability score of 68.8, which means that we have a ranking or a comparative ranking of meeting expectations across the state of Wisconsin. And you'll see that over the four prior school report cards, we were exceeding expectations. If you've been looking at the media across the state, there were obviously some shifts for several districts, but as we'll talk about in a minute, I think you'll see that the new strategic plan, as well as the work that started all the way back in May and June, is anticipating this information that we received this week. So related to each of our school buildings, you'll see that Berry had an accountability score of 80.2, Luther of 75.6, Purdy 69.2, Rockwell 72.3, the middle school of 75.1, and then the high school at 60.7. And then again, in the presentation, which these are always available to the public on our website, and the board had this in advance as well, you can see the five-year accountability scores for each of the school buildings there. This year, and again here, I'm sorry, I misspoke, are the same information, just with the accountability descriptors that are used by the state of Wisconsin. So the primary academic goal clearly is that all schools will significantly exceed expectations no later than the 2025-26 report card. And when we talked about this plan back in February, March, April, May, all the way through August, we said that this was a lofty goal. What we also knew at that point was what the data would look like, particularly related to the high school, which did see a decline in their rankings this year as well. So with that, we shared all of this information with our staff on Monday, and I prepared a video, a six-minute video that was shared with all of our staff prior to each principal working through the data related to their specific buildings, because that data then becomes further information to help us continue on our, our work of advancing teaching and learning. And instead of reprocessing all of that information, I thought it would just be helpful to show that six-minute video so that the public also has a sense of what is the messaging, what is the spirit, and what is the work that lies ahead our One Fort staff as well.
You may or may not be aware that the new Wisconsin school report cards will be made public on Tuesday. I say new because they are built on the latest information and data, but it is presented in a new format as well. I would contend the new format is more comprehensive, and it also provides an improved level of usability for us as educators as we strive to meet our goals. It is important to note right at the onset that there is really no debating about or negotiating around the report cards. Whether or not educators or communities like them, the report cards are by far, they are the most visible moniker of a public school's performance. School report cards matter because they are about student learning. Contrary to some people's perception, the report cards are not just about a simple or single test score. They include all sorts of other information that we need to consider in efforts to improve student learning. Attendance, engagement, graduation, growth, and more. And there is no negating or no debating the data. It's actual and it's factual. There are no yavats here. We need to own our results. I know a recurring theme that will emerge will be related to the impact of COVID and what that did to our performance. And of course, it had an impact to some extent on all schools, statewide, nationwide, and let's not forget globally. All of the schools across Wisconsin, they have the same report card structure based on the same information and the same data while happening in the same pandemic. Now let's be clear, our staff's hard work is why we performed as well as we did, especially in the areas where we were above the state average. That's where the growing efficacy of our One Fort collective, that's where that shows. Our ability to perform in areas above the state average, even during a pandemic, is evidenced when our students and staff from all labor groups and from all levels prioritize the focus on student social, emotional, as well as academic improvements. Everyone's role in One Fort matters, and everyone makes a difference. The 2021 report cards evidence our first steps toward an inclusive culture of growth and high performance. And while there are some areas of distinction already, we have some important work that lies ahead. If you think our new strategic plan, additional people services staff, the improved data structures, investment in teacher leadership, extra contract days for professional learning, reworking specific departments focused mid-year and others, if you think those are by chance, you're mistaken. We had a pretty clear sense of where we would land with this round of report cards, and we planned for it. This is not new data. This is the same data that we use to frame the new strategic plan, our district improvement plan, and each and every one of our building's improvement plans as well. There is no need to change course. The new report cards are affirmation that with our goals and improvement plans in place, we are in fact on the right course. We also have a lot to celebrate in this year's report cards, and let's not forget to honor our jump up and down moments when we've earned them, and there are many worthy of celebration. The report cards also point to our need to see improvement, and there is a definite call to action, especially in some parts of our learning community. As you've heard me say more than once, we are where we are, and that's okay, as long as we don't stay there. We need to focus on growth, getting all of our students to see at least a year's growth for a year of their time. We owe that to our kids. In some places, we didn't make that happen. Our district and community's future, it rests on our ability to make that growth happen. While it is important to celebrate our success, we must also not diminish our struggles by seeking reasons to justify them. This is deficit thinking. We need to own those and address them as opportunities to grow. I'm guessing we are going to get hit with some pretty tough questions about our level of performance in some places. This is why our five-year goal is in place. We need to work toward it, trust it, and believe in it. Our collective ability will make it happen, not if it will happen, when it happens. Take the time necessary to understand, process, and think through the school report cards. Our efforts in day-to-day learning must align with a path toward improved results. Our results are 100% driven by student learning. If we do nothing different, we already know what our results will be next spring. Use the learning data. Use what we know about our kids. Engage and invest in new structures aimed at improved student success, and believe that we can and will meet our goals. This is a great opportunity to remember that we are one team, we are one district, and we know our one community wants nothing more than for us to see continuous improvement in the future. We can, we will, and we must improve together for each of our One Fort students. We have the right team right here to make that happen. I believe in you, and I am One Fort proud to be all in.
So I think that really captures most of what we would like to present to you this evening. I would just also say that in addition to the school improvement plans and the district improvement plan that were shared earlier, we also are doing some mid-year adjustments at the high school as well. We are adding some significant professional learning and some adjustments in our math department, as well as our English department, learning that has been very much embraced and teachers are excited to get underway with, and, and those are things that we've started almost three weeks, almost a month ago already. And then we are also working on improving student and staff knowledge about the ASPIRE and ACT testing program. Teachers received a three-hour in-service on that on Monday, and there will be a student component that will take place throughout the course of, of the winter months as well, and there's certainly more to that story as well. But I think you'll see that beyond our existing plans, we're also making some adjustments based on new information as it becomes available to us and based on needs as we see them happen as well. So we have a five-year goal here, and as I remind staff, I remind myself sometimes too, that we are in month three of a 60-month goal, and we will continue to work hard and we will continue to make adjustments, and we will continue to chip away at making this a reality. In the 2025-26 school year, we're looking for six buildings to be having report cards of significantly exceeds expectations. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on this topic.
Does the board have any questions for Dr. Abbott? Or comments?
No, I don't.
I mean, I think through this whole process, this has been obviously very clear with us recently with, with the new strategic plan and things like that, but you know, as, as I went through the report card and took a deep dive into it, there's, there's really not a ton of surprises that I don't think anybody else on the board was, were shocked with. But on the flip side about is, is I'm excited that those came out and we, we now can get going on, on where we need to improve, not like that wasn't happening previously, but I think it's very clear how we're going to and when we're going to. And like from here, it's just onward and upward for, for where we're at today, so I'm excited about, about where we're at right now.
And again, not to be lost in this, every single one of our six buildings have celebrations in, in parts of their school report card as well. And the jump up and down moment refers back to something I put out there in our beginning of the year convocation, and, and that is that we really do need to be better at acknowledging our successes, and sometimes those are small and sometimes those are grand, but we're often moving on to what's next, and we need to take just a pause to acknowledge what, what we are finding success with as well.
Yep.
I guess I got one kind of abstract question, but I know there's the report cards, right, which we'll see yearly. Are there other ways that you can track progress throughout a year that indicate how, how we're, how we're headed rather than just waiting for that once a year thing?
Yeah, so the learning data that I referenced earlier in the presentation, those are assessments and those are activities that kids, in some cases, engage with three different times throughout the year. And so we're able to, to track individual student growth, see where there are some advancements, where perhaps there are some setbacks, where there's some, some not much movement at allness as well. But there are lots of different pieces that teachers and staff are able to access to tweak and adjust instructional programming just in time as opposed to waiting for an annual event. And beyond the academic side, and I think you'll, you'll hear in later presentations, we're also gathering other information from students and families as well related to social, emotional health and learning and other dynamics of school that are critically important when it comes to having kids physically in our classrooms learning as well. So one of the main pieces that we've, we've spent a lot of additional time and energy over the last year or two is, is really creating a more robust assessment system that does exactly what you're asking about, which is, as opposed to having an annual event and an unveiling, how is it that we know exactly where we're at when we still have kids in front of us?
All right, hearing no further discussion, thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. We can go ahead and move forward to a district audit report, and I believe we have somebody-
Yes, this evening, we're happy to welcome Mr. Matt Barron from our new audit firm. The board and community may remember that we had a search process last spring to engage with a new audit firm. We selected Lauterbach and Eamon. He will be sharing with the board the audit report as of June 30th of this year, which can be accessed to the public in Board Docs, as well as the board, you do have a printed copy of those documents should you like to reference them. So again, thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Dr. Abbott. Hello, everybody. I'm Matt Barron, as said, the audit partner that oversaw your audit with, from Lauterbach and Eamon. Very excited to be here tonight to present, to be able to meet all of you in person and to be able to present tonight to you. So ultimately, this is the culmination of the process that we went through together, so I'll kind of give you an overview of what that process was to help get us to tonight, and then we'll get into the documents themselves. So once we were honored to get the contract, to be able to work with you guys on this, we were thrust right into it and had to jump right into the membership audit. Had to work on that right away with Jason and the team to be able to complete that by the beginning of May. From there, we go into our entrance conference, which is our planning meeting. We met with Jason and basically the whole team that day to go over what our process was going to be, our, our request materials and the overall schedule of what we were going to follow along. We learned a lot about the district that day to help give us our planning as we went into the rest of the audit process. From there, we came back out to do preliminary fieldwork onsite where we reviewed your internal controls out here with your significant procedures with payroll, cash, receipts, disbursements, et cetera, to be able to access the internal control framework that we have in place out here. Then we did the fieldwork where we tested your numbers, along with that, also doing some of the single audit testing with the grant compliance testing, then be able to move us forward to writing the report. We went to the report writing phase, worked with Jason to complete this, so it's in compliance with all government accounting standards, that brings us here to tonight. So it's been a great process working with Jason and the team. They had a very complete audit package, as you can expect. All of our questions were answered right away and just can't commend them enough for the hard work that they had leading up to tonight. So without further ado, I'll talk about our couple of reports we want to talk about. So there's two of them. I know Jason said that he have a list of different PDFs or those reports. We're just going to talk about two of them tonight. One's the audit report and the management letter. I'm going to start with the audit report. It's the thicker of the bound documents. I'll take us through my typical flow of how I do my presentation. I keep it at a high level for you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask as we go. I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, once I get to certain spots, I'll ask if you guys have questions before I move on to the next sections. So within the audit report, let's take us forward to the true page one of this report. It has the Lauterbach and Eamon letterhead on it. This is the opinion page. We gave the district an unmodified opinion after our audit. It's the highest opinion that we provide. It's the, what we're saying with that is basically three things. One, the numbers within this report, based on our testing, are basically are what they say they are. Two, the district has an adequate internal control framework in place based on our testing. And three, the audit report is in compliance with all government accounting standards. From there, flipping forward a couple of pages to page four is the management discussion and analysis. What this section is, is a high-level narrative summary of everything that's within this report, so rather than reading through all 100 pages that's in here, you can kind of hit the high points within this section. So since I'm going to be covering that within the report, we're going to flip on past this whole section, and let's get to pages, page, let's go forward to page 17. On page 17, when we get there, that is your balance sheet for your governmental fund. So these are the funds that you budget for on a yearly basis to see, to be able to track the government, the district's expenditures and how we're doing each year. So this is your balance sheet. Where we're at, far right-hand column on page 18, or on 17, is your total. Second number up from the bottom is the one we care about, total fund balance. We have total about 16.4 million at the end of the year across all of your funds. Your main operating fund is your general fund, is your far-left-hand column. Again, second number up from the bottom, we're at about $12.6 million of total fund balance. So how'd we do this year? So how'd we do this year? Let's go forward to page 19. On page 19, this is your income statement for these funds. Again, take us to the far-right-hand column, our totals, third number up from the bottom. We had a total increase this year, about $2.8 million. How this happened, where this occurred is truly as we look at your general fund and what happened this year within your general fund. We had a total increase there, about $2.7 million within your general fund. Revenues were pretty consistent with budget during the year, but your expenses, we were able to hold below budget in many areas, salaries, supplies, purchases, kind of across the board there, as far as your expenditures go to lead to this $2.6 million increase. From there, I always look to see how healthy are our fund balances when we're comparing expenditures back to against the fund balances. Your general fund itself is at 31% when we compare those numbers, so very healthy balance as far as the end of the year goes and in range of what your fund balance policy is at the end of the year. That is my audit report presentation. Before we talk about the management letter, does anybody have any questions about the audit report? All right, flipping forward to the management letter. So the management letter is the skinnier of the couple documents that you provided. It's a good thing that it's skinny. That means it's, I don't have a lot to report in there, so this is good. The management letter is additional information that we provide to you as the board and the management of items that we noted within this audit that don't fit within the audit report, but we feel need to be communicated to you. So I typically break these up into three different types of comments. One being informational types, two, best practices that we see out in the industry, and three, true internal control issues that we noted within the audit report, or within the audit. So as we get into this, we had two current recommendations, one of which being is a new GASB standard, a new government accounting standard, GASB 87, is for leases. That's for next year's audits. We'll be implementing that into next year's audits. So this is more of an informational type for you, just to give you a heads up, this is coming. We'll be implementing that in for next year. Essentially, what's happening is operating leases and capital leases are going to get treated the same way going forward. So it's no longer that much of a distinction. So that's our job, is to do that for you. So we'll help, Jason, and we'll get through it. So it's not a big deal. Number two, funds over budget. We had two funds that went over budget. Again, this is kind of communicating to you, I'm sure you're somewhat aware of the funds that went over budget and the reasons why. I can have Jason answer any of the questions for these two particular funds, but it's something we have to check as the auditors and make sure that the board is aware that of the budget that you had approved, there was a couple of funds that ended up going over budget as far as expenditures go. But otherwise, there's no other true internal control issues noted. That's a very good thing. That means it was a very clean audit as far as what we saw when we dug into all of the stuff and all the questions that we asked to Jason and the whole team during this process. It's obviously a lot more in the first year that we asked because we're getting to know you and you're getting to know us during this whole process. We bombarded them with a lot of questions and came away with no internal control issues that were noted. So it was a good, clean audit, and just want to thank them for all their hard work and working with us on this audit this year. Any questions about the management letter or anything else?
Did we figure out why those are two went over?
So the first one, special revenue, that's our district-level activity accounts for student activities. We plug in a budget based on what happened in the prior year, and we don't really adjust that budget throughout the year because it's so different from year to year. And then the second one is debt service, and that was part of our refinancing last year. If you remember, we paid off debt early. We just didn't adjust the budget to match what ended up happening when we did that payoff.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions for Mr. Barron from the board?
How will the audit process look perhaps differently this year, you know, this upcoming year as it did last year, being the first year that you guys truly did not it on us?
So as far as differences really will go, there'll be some, we won't have to ask for certain documents that we already received this year. So in year one, we're trying to build the permanent files and some of the things that we need to get in year one. Next year, we're going to be doing more of roll-forward type procedures on some of the things, specifically like internal controls. We have an outline of what things look like now. We'll be able to do the interviews more based on, okay, this is what we saw last year, this, like, has anything changed? Let's talk through the changes and start really seeing those types of differences from one year to the next.
Sure.
As far as your, like, the level of procedures go and what it is we're looking at, we're going to keep it at the same level to, you know, we're looking for the same types of things year in, year out, to make sure we're doing our job and reviewing those things as the full, the full amount, but just some of those would be a little bit different as far as from one year to the next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it greatly. Really appreciate it.
Yep. I'd like to just say thank you very much, Mr. Gemrath, for providing us with one less thing that we have to worry about in a period where we've had to worry about a lot of stuff that we typically don't have to worry about. One thing that we can entrust is that our budget is going to not look funny. Thank you very much for your, for your work and your staff's work.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron.
I'll see you guys later.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion before us.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the audit report for the 2020-21 fiscal year as presented by Lauterbach, Amon, LLP, Naperville, Illinois.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Paul, second by Mrs. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bokta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Cheney?
Yes, and that passes, and we will move forward to Christina Oswald and a nutrition services report. Is this the, this is the award-winning?
Am I supposed to preface that the year, the award-winning?
Uh, yeah, and then you guys make me follow finances. It's a good thing I made budgets.
You should feel really happy about that, Christina.
Yeah, I mean, you followed like the most flawless report.
Yeah, if you want to look at Fund 50, I didn't exceed my expenses. I did good. All right, is it the big button? I do food. All right. That one, all right, cool. All right. So first of all, can I say that I have not had the opportunity to speak to you guys since joining the district two years ago? This is my first board meeting, so really thank you for inviting me today. I just feel like so much has happened since I started, and we really haven't had a chance to talk about it without masks and in person. So I am just going to kind of recap some of that as we go along, too. So I just wanted to point out that our hard-working staff, and when I talk about our hard-working staff, we're currently at 17 members plus myself, so short staff but hard-working. We are made up of 10 moms from your district, one dad, one grandparent, four alumni, and range in age from 24 to 63. We're pretty diverse. So during, I just want to mention that they've mentioned flexibility and dedication when feeding students within our community from March through December of 2020. I believe the phrase pivot was coined during that time, and I mean, we were dizzy. Nutrition Services Department has been fiscally responsible, which you'll read about in that book that you just received, and able to maintain a positive fund balance throughout the pandemic. And our department continues to make improvements in areas of nutrition, food quality, and menu developments. I don't know, apparently I'm like really bad at this.
You're doing great.
No, I'm doing really bad, actually. Okay. Well, it's, I think I'm in 15 hours already here, so bear with me. All right, so in March of 2020, wow, our world was turned upside down. Within 24 hours of finding out that school was closing, we had our first meal services set up at Berry and Luther. We wasted no time in making sure that kids in this community were going to get fed. A week later, due to the not nicest Facebook post I've ever read, I decided that we had to do something different because basically the community was saying, it's great to have two schools great for pickup, not so great for us in the rural area. So a week later, we had vans delivering food. And by April 1st, we had decided to shut down all of our pickup sites and go to 100% delivery, which meant 1,400 different students were getting 2,800 meals daily. Okay, it was, it was quite the endeavor. That continued until the bus contract ended in June of 2020. Then we automatically pivoted to weekly meal pickups through August and then started that right up again when school closed in September and did that through December. So we just have some photos there of just some of the fun times that we had and all of the various aspects of food service. We went from bags to boxes and tried to keep it entertaining along the way for the kiddos. See, seriously, really bad at this. All right, participation. So I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what happened during that snippet of time compared to other, you know, in the same timeframe, different years. So nationally, during the pandemic, student nutrition programs really took a hit. You may have seen that in the media, talking about, you know, everybody doing the best they can, but ultimately, there was a lot of grants being given because departments just couldn't keep their head above, above water. Locally, I'm very proud to say that didn't happen here in Fort. You can see, the green line shows 1819, and kind of like where are, like, for instance, April is just so significant. If you look at that tiny little green line, that's a typical school breakfast number. The purple line is what we were serving for breakfast during the pandemic, and then the orange line is pretty much right back to normal once the kids are back in school. Same as, you know, when you look at May and then June, the numbers were just unbelievable during the pandemic compared to what we've done during the school year. When you look at the orange lines, you're going to see what happened is when the kids came back. We know that there was a decrease in our in-person attendance, but we were still able to hold our own and really not take a significant hit from what the normal numbers were from back in 1819. Some of the numbers that I also want to point out for that 2021 school year are if you look at the June and July, like, breakfast numbers, especially that July breakfast number, you can see it's almost as high as what we were doing during that first summer of the pandemic. And that goes to what Amy was speaking of, is that we were actually able, because of USDA waivers, we were able to feed the kids breakfast in the classroom during summer school as well as give them a lunch to take home. Will we be able to do that again? I'm not sure. The waivers have not been approved yet by the USDA, but I'm hoping that they start looking at what that did for kids in the community and how healthy that was for those children, and I'm hoping that they make those changes permanent. All right, fiscal management. I just, again, wanted to show you kind of what happened and what's been going on within our department. So the top two lines are revenue and expenditures from 1819, fairly even, basically a break-even year, which is pretty typical, and that's really all that the DPI ever wants from Fund 50 is to be break-even. If you compare the 1920 revenue expenses, you'll see that we did not have a break-even year. We actually had a pretty good year due to the increase in reimbursements that were given as well as really just adjusting some of the ways that the department purchases food and going to more scratch cooking, which does actually cost less than processed foods. And then if you look at the 2021 revenue expenses, you're going to see the same thing. We, again, decreased food costs, increased the amount of USDA commodities that were received, and therefore kept our expenses low, and again, were able to generate a revenue surplus. Okay, one of the big things I'm really excited about that we did, and we actually did, made this purchase during the pandemic, but then we really didn't have a lot of use for it from September through December of that year, is our new interactive menu. And I'm not sure how many students or parents or admin have even looked at this, but what it does is it gives us the capability of making real-time changes to the menu, which back in 2020, when this purchase was made, I don't think we knew how significant that was with the supply chain issues that we're having here in 2021 and that are foreseen to continue into 2022. We are making changes to the menu multiple times a week based on things that are not showing up when the delivery truck arrives. So it gives us the opportunity to go in, make those adjustments immediately. What that does for our nurses is it gives them the, the access to instant nutritional changes. So all of these menus are tied to recipes, which contain the allergens and all of the calories, carbohydrates, things that the nurses need in order to make the proper decisions when it comes to the health of the students. So that is an instant thing that shows up on these menus. The other cool thing, considering that we do have a lot of children where English is not their first language, or families, you can instantly translate this menu into like 30 different languages. I've looked at it in Norwegian just for fun. I have no idea what it says, but you can do it. And not only do you have, this have to be web-based, but you can actually download an app right onto your phone, and you have instant access to what's being served that day. Food quality and awareness. Now, this is kind of my background is culinary, so I am all about trying to do scratch or speed scratch, speed scratch cooking as opposed to buying processed foods. It really allows us to control the allergens, additives, things like that within our product. Just as a quick example, we used to buy a taco meat that contained gluten and soy, and it was really one of those things that we had to be careful with. We have a lot of students that have these two allergies. And now that we're training the staff to do more scratch cooking, we don't have to worry about that. We don't have to have special menus and special items all of the time. For some things, they can eat right off of the lunch line, just like their peers. Let's see, watch us grow. Bork Farm. Purdy has so kindly partnered with us and Nutrition Services to host our very first bork farm here in the district. This is a hydroponic growing tower. The Green Team is taking care of this for me weekly. They go in, they test the water, and you can see in the photo there. There, they're working with the representative from Fork Farm during our training session. So there's a little bit of science involved, a little bit of chemistry, and a whole lot of fun. The bottom picture is actually a picture from two days ago. That farm is full of greens, so if you get an opportunity to stop into the Purdy cafeteria before Monday, you can see those greens in full bloom. On Monday, we will be harvesting and then serving that lettuce during the Purdy lunch on Tuesday. One of the other things that, once we started this, I got an email from Luther saying, hey, we have a sensory garden. Do you guys want the produce? So of course, we said yes. So we've been serving tomatoes, peppers, and acorn squash out of that garden as well. Middle School jumped on board and said, hey, of course you can use our greenhouse. We haven't had the opportunity to plant anything yet, but it is in the works for the spring. So we're really excited to be bringing fresh fruits, vegetables, produce, just anything that we can start growing in these various locations, in the hopes that we have all of the other schools get on board as well, and we see multiple fork farms throughout the district. All right, so what's in store for the future? Let's see, find ways to fill vacancies within the department. That would be a huge thing. We are currently really kind of a bare-bones staff, but even with that, we're still trying to keep the momentum up that we've had and, you know, make sure that these kids are still getting quality nutritious meals and still served with a smile. We've been introducing more ethnic flavors. During Hispanic Heritage Month, we did make a pozole. One of my passions is ethnic cooking, so I do like to bring that into the cafeteria whenever I have time. So we'll be seeing more of that again as, as time allows. And then we just want to continue to change that perception of school lunch. I think people think of school lunch as just processed foods, quick heat and eat, and that's not what we want. I mean, currently, we are putting out three or four fresh fruits and vegetables a day that the students can choose from. We make fresh-made salads and sandwiches daily, which I think even some of the staff have been participating in, in some of these elementary schools. And with, even with all of this, we're still... And with, even with all of this, we're still seeing an increase in participation. You know, people were like, our kids don't eat that. I don't think the kids are going to eat that, you know? In my experience, you have to put it in front of them like a dozen times before they warm up to the idea. And I think we're only on like time three or four, so we have a lot more time to train these kids on like what good food is all about. So we're really excited in Nutrition Services. So I think, well, I think that was the last one. Except Jason insisted that I showed you my really cool logo yet one more time. All right, well, thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me regarding our department or? All right.
Now, I just think that you guys have done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
You guys outcooked my taco meat, so I'm not, not stoked about that. My kids like your taco meat more than mine.
I am so sorry.
I realize though that my taco meat's garbage, so.
I had no idea. I'm sorry. I would share that recipe if you need me to.
Thank you.
I, I would also add that when they're appropriately staffed, that Chris and her staff have been doing some catering for district and some non-district trainings and events as well, to which they've received a standing ovation when we had other districts coming in for training. So beyond the lunch program, breakfast program, and those types of things, we're really anxious to get you the staff you need because I think the staff is very anxious to be able to start purchasing some of your high-quality items for, for lunch as well. It's a service we'd love to be able to provide.
Thank you.
And I would just also add that I was really glad that you went back to the beginning of the pandemic because I, I think in your leadership and, and the tireless work of your staff and, and vision, execution has been amazing. And I know of, of many, many districts who have not taken full advantage of some of the federal waivers or some of the other opportunities or even grant-writing opportunities that you have as well, and it's certainly acknowledged and appreciated, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, we're looking forward to feeding you as well, so we're really hoping for January.
What does full staff look like for you? You mentioned you had 17 before. What does that ideally look like for you?
So full staff is typically 20 or 21. I'm down three key positions at my high school, so I've been in the kitchen daily, preparing the food for the elementary schools because we just don't have somebody who's trained and versed in quantity cooking when you're cooking for 600 littles.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate you went back after you're going through some of those slides. It's like, oh yeah, I remember that stuff happening, but even like the bus drop-off and things like that, I kind of slipped my mind for a moment, but I, I think this is one of the, one of the real things that makes our district unique and, and, and different. So thank you for all the work that you and your team do.
Well, thank you. I mean, we, we wouldn't do it if we didn't love the kids.
I have a quick question for you. I think it's pretty cool and interesting to learn that you can cook food from scratch for cheaper than buying cans of whatever. Can you, can you just give like one, like specific example that might surprise people? Like how that actually works or, or one specific example of why that is?
Well, so part of it is when we talk about USDA commodities, I can buy a 40-pound case of ground beef for $2 and turn that into a lot of different things. Well, let's go back to like the taco meat, for example. Or I can buy a 30-pound case of taco meat and it costs me $60. So it costs me $2 a pound to buy taco meat, or it costs me $2 for 40 pounds if I take advantage of the fact that the USDA has commodities. Why some districts don't take advantage of the USDA commodities and get in raw turkey, for instance, we roasted 420 pounds of raw turkey roast on Monday because we serve turkey dinner today at the elementaries and tomorrow the secondary schools get that. But again, so we're talking about, again, 40 pounds of turkey for $2. But a lot of schools just don't feel that they have the labor and/or the food safety knowledge to do it properly. But that's all part of training, so that's what we've really been working hard on is so my, my staff understands how to handle those foods, how to do it safely, how to properly cook, properly cool. So yes, there's a training cost to it, but ultimately you train them once and then you just continue saving money down the road. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Oswald?
No, you just, you guys have done absolutely amazing.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to items or item C is the adult meal price increase.
Yes, we received word that we did need to make an adjustment to be in compliance with some federal regulations, and that motion or resolution rather is before you.
Be it resolved that due to the U.S. Department of Agriculture regulations, the following adult meal prices be increased effective December 1st, 2021. Adult breakfast from $2.10 to $2.56, and adult lunch from $4.25 to $4.65.
A second? Motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. Nickram, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mrs. Buhta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cheney?
Yes, and that passes. Moving on, we will have the district technology report, and I believe that would be Mr. Skowen.
Yes, delayed almost as much as the summer school report is the district technology report. In fact, we've updated from Apple II Cs in the meantime, I believe.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's because they're still using DOS 6. They'd be a lot faster if they were using.
Oops, hold on.
I didn't say Apple II in the background.
Wow.
I'm never giving that computer up. It was built one year before I was born.
Thank you for that.
So thank you for having me in the technology report today. I'd like to share some of the many things we've prioritized over the last year and some of the accomplishments, struggles, opportunities, threats, and the vast ecosystem of IT. Chris, you are not kidding.
This is supposed to work for you, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, good thing I know an IT guy.
There is just so much to do with this moment that it's really difficult to do nothing.
All right, next slide, please. I think the battery died. All right. Oh.
Have you tried turning it off and restarting?
We've got like OBS running and, you know, 1,000 windows up. All right, so anyways, as always, brain dumping, like all the not-so-boring things that I wanted to talk about today. A few common categories emerged. Those categories are infrastructure, cybersecurity, educational technology, and strategic initiatives. But takes a team and got a lean one and a really great one. They're all awesome. They make my job very, very, very easy. And I'd like to give a very special shout-out to all of the librarians for their hard work with like Chromebook distribution, tech integration, frontline support for the district. We are very, very lucky to have them and not many districts still do. So who doesn't like a good visual representation of a school year amidst a pandemic? We get to see the entire school year through the peaks and valleys of bandwidth traffic. Our course switch up at the high school paints a picture of INGRES and EGRIS data, and along the way is our story of the 2020, 2021 school year. It's bittersweet and quite beautiful. You can see in March where the, where the world shut down and in September where we, when we started school, then we switched to virtual, came back in November, and then there's a noticeable gap in traffic mid-November, and that's where we replaced our firewall. We went from a one gigabyte fiber internet connection to a 10-gig internet connection, giving us plenty of bandwidth headroom. If you're an audio guy like me, you know, we often appreciate the headroom. Replacing a firewall, it's not as straightforward as just turning off the old one and turning on the new one. We spent a great deal of time planning and after the switchover date, we spent more time finding like little tweaks needed to make sure that the internet was running smoothly. Pretty proud of our team for doing this all on our own. Could have been quite pricey if we were to outsource it. Some of the more, more infrastructure upgrades included our outdoor Wi-Fi project. So last year, you may recall that I mentioned the benefits of having internet outside the walls of our schools, whether that's for like a virtual gym class or simply moving class outside on a, on a nice day. Our district received funding commitments from the feds for this project, and after many, many, many months of waiting for the new outdoor access points to arrive, there's something about a microchip shortage that seems to continue to be an excuse. The APs, they did arrive and we've been busy installing them. And actually, when I was going to give this presentation last month, we just started installing them and we just finished this week, so we have outdoor Wi-Fi at all of our buildings. And I was at the, I was at the high school and I was sitting in the library and I just saw like this train of like 26 kids walk out into the back courtyard on one of the nice days last week and all on their Chromebooks and learning outside, so that was pretty, pretty special to see. So the, the, it's also playgrounds, parking lots, and stadiums, we have Wi-Fi. An update, another infrastructure update, the Fort Atkinson Shared Technical Resources Network, or the FASTER Network, as we call it. So back in 2019, the district and the city of Fort Atkinson, we partnered and built our own, self-owned fiber optic network connecting all of our schools and city buildings in the community. Some American Rescue Plan funds became available and the city like built that network down to the business park on the south. But I'm happy to report that the FASTER network is gonna have one more internet service provider available to offer gigabit internet to businesses and, and also it'll benefit the, the city or the school district as well because we'll have a redundant internet connection to fail over on if our internet goes down. Never, never quite like when the internet goes down. Let's see, as more, as more broadband expansion funding sources become available, it'll be exciting to see how this network can expand to benefit the technical needs of our community. Seems like just about every week, we're hearing about another school district that has to shut down its entire technical operations due to being hit with a ransomware attack. Just last month, it happened to Janesville, so it was pretty close to home. Our, our approach to staying on top of this is leaning on the experts. K-12 school districts have the benefit of joining this multi-state information sharing and analysis center, or MS ISIC. The government loves their acronyms. But the mission of MS ISIC is to improve the overall cybersecurity posture of the nation's state, local, tribal, and territorial governments through focused cyber threat prevention, protection, response, and recovery. So members have access to like just-in-time information about latest security vulnerabilities as well as like self-assessment tools that we can run in our systems and compare how we've got things configured to like benchmark best practice configurations in the lens of security. So we've been working pretty hard at conforming to those best practices. Got a tool called the malicious domain blocking and reporting service, which is basically a government-run firewall that they know all the bad guys out there, and if anything on your network is trying to get to those bad guys, it'll just block it for you, which is just another layer of security. MS ISIC is a partner with the Department of Homeland Security, and having access to these resources free of charge has been incredibly valuable to guide our cybersecurity priorities. And you can call them too if you need help, which is really quite nice. Continuing to participate in the Student Data Privacy Consortium, ensuring that educational technology tools that we subscribe to, those tools that have access to our students' information and staff's information, that they hold that data securely, responsibly, and with strict legal ramifications for misuse of that information. So the more and more school districts that, you know, establish these contracts with, with these companies, it puts a great deal of legal pressure on them to keep our kids' Into educational technology, we've invested in our newish one-to-one program, so every fifth and ninth grader was assigned a brand-new device that they'll carry with them for the next four years. One modification that we made is we invested in touch, touchscreen Chromebooks for our youngest learners, our kindergarten and first graders. Having a touch-capable device at those younger levels will help them familiarize themselves with advice, particularly as they progress in their academic careers and into computerized testing seasons. Tests by design are already hard, so any leg-up that our kids can have on the tools that they use to take the test will only increase their academic success. So over the last few years, we've been replacing our existing projectors and smart boards with these interactive televisions, which are just basic giant touchscreen TVs that our teachers use for front-of-the-room instruction. We can annotate over webpages, slides, you can run like interactive apps on them. The most convincing benefit was they have like high, really bright, high-def picture quality that's advertised the last like 50,000 screen-on hours, so a good long-term investment. And we used to, we used to buy like 30 or 40 of them a year, like our projectors would die and dim and fade, but happy to report that we just placed an order for about 130 of them to replace the remaining classroom TV or projectors and smart boards. And then last category is how the technology department fits its role in the district's strategic goals in academic success, distinction, and choice destination for families. Some of our priorities will be helping building leaders interpret the many academic data points that they have, such as attendance, behavior, assessment. We'll continue to automate, automate things and find efficiencies to free up time, precious, precious time, from day-to-day operations towards other achievement priorities. And quite frankly, I was really, really shocked at how smooth like the start of this school year went from like a technical standpoint, and I attribute that to like the resiliency and self-sufficiency that our staff gained over the really, really challenging, the challenges that presented itself last year. Like honestly, like the tickets we've been getting are really challenged. They're hard, which is great. It's not, like, we want teachers asking those, those tough questions, like how to integrate tools in their lessons and leaning on us for additional support to try out new things and using technology to help bridge language barriers or whatever it might be. Technical support is becoming much more academic-focused and less like, can you come down and unjam my printer? Which we're happy to still do. So thank you for the opportunity to share some of the neat things that are happening in our department, and it's a unique time filled with challenges and opportunities that I'm happy to be a part of. That will take any questions.
No, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Great presentation, Mr. Skowen.
And apparently, everybody knows how to turn off and on their computer.
Did you try to turn it off and turn it back on?
Thank you very much, DJ.
All right, we're moving forward to school mental health services report, and Mrs. Hollenberger present to us school mental health report.
All right, well, thank you so much for letting me present tonight. I think it's on time. I don't think this one was pushed back. It actually made it on the month it was supposed to make it. So it's always a pleasure to share with the board and all the amazing things going on and our work with social emotional learning and behavioral mental health is one of those things that continues to grow in need as well as our response to that need. So our work continues to align with our strategic plan, making sure our services and supports are aligning to making our district one of distinction and always working to cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. So it's no secret that school mental health has always been an important part of the school environment. Research continues to support the importance and necessity of continuing to increase awareness and develop strong understanding of the connection of mental health to achievement and student success. School mental health services and supports are an effective means of addressing the mental health needs of students or children and improving the learning environment overall. School mental health is seldom something that stands alone, but rather becomes intricately interwoven into a myriad of best practices. So the quote I inserted here- So the quote I inserted here is aged, but it's purposefully used to show that needs haven't changed. So, even though it's from 1995, which my daughter said, "The 1900s, Mom," mental health has always, has always been an integral part of student achievement and connectedness to school. And our focus continues to grow as we learn more and more about it. The Department of Public Instruction developed a framework that's been shared repeatedly. That's the one that is the, the very symmetrical and aligned pyramid. And although it's somewhat basic in its depiction, it really does a great job of visually presenting the various levels of support and the interdependence that each level has on the ones surrounding it. We also find ourselves aligning to the Saint A model of the integrated school mental health model. Theirs also is a pyramid, but it's not quite as intricately aligned and does show that there's some movement in the different tiers of interventions that are provided. We've been aligning with Saint A because they have been, we've been using them for our trauma-sensitive schools training and they have just a little bit more intensive practice around that area of our work. So, we'll focus first on foundations and then go into the various levels of support that we have. The foundational principles supporting the framework are critical and they provide us the success we need for prevention, early intervention and intensive supports for the positive, positive development of students' social, emotional and mental health and mental health. So the strength of our system obviously lies firmly in the foundational practices. Like any situation, if we neglect the foundation, the, any neglect in the foundational structure leads to instability in area, in other areas. So the district continues to ground our levels of support in reliable data, culturally responsive and evidence-based best practices and ongoing continuous learning and improvement to ultimately ensure that mental health initiatives are prioritized and integrated into the everyday practices. The areas depicted by the red area, arrows are areas that have been specifically targeted in tonight's presentation. Resting on top of our strong foundational structures are the layers of universal practices, those accessed by all students, selected supports that are provided for some of the students who have that level of need and intensive supports for the students who need the intensive level of support as well. Mental health continues to be a dimension of overall health on a continuum from very high levels of wellness to very severe levels of illness. As I was preparing this slide tonight, I realized that we really do have some amazing elements of practice and support occurring and I could essentially speak to that all night long, but it's getting late, so I just picked a few. So, across the, the levels, at the universal level, one of the areas that we've been really working on this year is our trauma-sensitive practices. We had a team of 15 staff that were previously trained prior to the pandemic and we have approximately eight to 10 more getting trained this year to have upwards of almost more than 20 trainers in our district around trauma-sensitive school practices, which is an extremely amazing resource for our district to have because we're able to provide monthly and learning and ongoing training on the essential elements of trauma and how it affects learning environment. So rather than just becoming this one shop or this one shot in the dark of a PD that, that people might go to and then come back and maybe practice, we're able to keep it in people's, in front of people on an ongoing basis and really become part of their everyday practice as opposed to that one thing you do for that one student. The curriculum that we were using is a responsive curriculum, so the seven elements of trauma don't actually change, they stay the same and it's, we're able to be responsive to what students are showing us and what staff need to respond to that. So, we, there's not a timeline for when it needs to be done, it's, it's deep, so we're able to use different elements of it to address different levels of need. Our ongoing social-emotional learning is again an integrated part of our everyday practice. We utilize the second step curriculum at the elementary and DBT Steps A at the middle school and high school. Both of those are research-based curriculums and ground in a, and to ground in and grow from. This year, we applied for and received a competitive school mental health grant through DPI, which is providing additional funding for a nice core of people at the high school to receive the DBT Steps A training so that we've got a, a nice core of staff that have this training and can provide this ongoing learning for our students. In the selective supports, those are typically supports that we, we focus on specific populations of students who might need like more identified supports. We continue to use our systems to identify the needs early and respond as soon as possible. We can't say enough about early identification and because of the amount of people and professionals that we have working in this area, we're able to get to students sooner. And then, of course, our connections. Not only are we focusing on building relationships across all of the classrooms and with our students, the connections beyond the school are, are even growing more than they ever have due to the work of our new school's social workers. And then, our intensive supports are still provided for the population of students that need that intensive, ongoing clinical level support in a school setting. We partner with Fort Healthcare and have a behavioral health counselor that comes into our district and provides those services right in our buildings. She's here full-time, we have her Monday through Friday in the middle school and high school. She has a full caseload. And one of the highlights this year was that she was able to, she was able to continue her services all through the pandemic enclosures, but she had the opportunity to keep those services going throughout the summer. And it was the best-attended summer session that she's ever had. So that really helped start the school year with students in a whole different place than they would have been if they hadn't accessed those services. In addition, the high school is reaping the benefits of the Jefferson County Human Services Behavioral Social Worker. They too got grant monies that they hired these two individuals for and they're providing services in districts one day a week. And so, that person has been helping with any overflow in our, our district's caseload and also meeting weekly at crossroads to provide the DBT Steps A curriculum with that population of students. So you may notice the interplay of arrows on the slide. What historically has been a somewhat linear sequence of provision of services going from all to some to few, has had to change to meet our current needs. As we remain responsive to what students are showing us through behavior as a means of communication, we are continuing to shift our level of intensity and focus. What maybe once was considered a universal, universal practice, we've been tweaking to become more focused and used with our selected support format. And likewise, some of the supports and programming that we were using specifically with selected individuals or small groups have been restructured to be used within a universal format and used for all. So, those are just some of the shifts and changes that we've made in this format. After outlining what our practices and supports look like, it's important to recognize the team of professionals and experts that deliver much of the supports and services outlined in the prior slide. The roles of our pupil services teams just cannot be underestimated for the value they have in the overall success of student learning and achievement. The individuals who provide these services create a firm foundation of support for our building leaders, our students, our teachers and families. The depth and breadth of our, our pupil services team has grown considerably over just the past few years through the addition of some key roles to meet the ever-changing, ever-growing mental health and social-emotional needs of our students. The recent addition of school social workers and school psychologists at each level has strengthened the ongoing continuum of supports. I have been able to witness firsthand the connectivity that the social workers have created, not only between the school environment and the families, but among the various levels and layers of services that are available to those families. So, we were able often to connect to the families and the families were connected to other resources and now we're all connected. And it's just kind of amazing to watch that, that depth of knowledge work around like how to create, how to take away some of the barriers and create pathways to our school and learning. Additionally, our students are receiving some of the best supports aligned within our multi-leveled systems of support system due to the hard work of our school psychologists at each of our levels. And since the addition of these roles have equalized the growing responsibilities, our school counselors have actually gotten the opportunity to be school counselors rather than having to wear the various hats that they had to because of all the needs that we were asking them or expecting them to meet. So our district continues to remain responsive to the needs and relies heavily on the expertise of those professionals in those roles. And it can't go unmentioned that the school board's continued support of these have just, have made this possible. So, that, those four interconnected circles up there are, are truly like the ideal of what we, what we want to see in a school and you have been supportive of us getting that in our district, so I appreciate that. So as we continue to remain responsive to student needs, how we determine areas of need and focus are driven by data. Data in this area is often interwoven into various pieces of information that's regularly collected, so quarterly report cards, daily behavioral write-ups, observations, charting. I think it's safe to say that social-emotional learning is important for academic achievement, but it isn't always the easiest to measure. So information from our culture-climate surveys allows pupil services staff to identify needs beyond those that we typically see exhibited in classrooms or group areas. We rely heavily on these surveys to help us gauge how students are feeling about school by asking questions related to safety, belonging and overall feelings of success. This survey is given to students grades three through five at each elementary building, all students at the middle school and all students at the high school in both the fall and spring of each year. This year, I should note that the pupil services, the elementary pupil services teams decided to include second graders in the survey, but their data, when, the data that I share later is, their data is retracted from that so that we're able to like show equal data points. Also, to note that the data I'm sharing tonight is from the elementary buildings. We do similar information collected at all levels, but the elementary, we first got first, but we also, it's presenting a little bit greater variance than our historical data, so I thought it was worth bringing our attention to. So, the data collected at the elementary level in the fall of 2021, 2022 had some areas that showed variance from historical data. I'm gonna be touching on three of those areas tonight. One of the areas that raised our attention was that of students' ability to demonstrate behaviors conducive to learning. This is measured by students answering yes or no to the question, "Students in my class behave, so my teacher can teach." As the charts show, there was a significant decrease in students' feeling as though they were in an environment where they could learn. This is a direct correlation to social-emotional learning in self-awareness competencies and self-management competencies. Another area that raised, was brought to our attention was that of students treating each other well. This is measured by students answering yes or no to the question, "Students treat each other well." As the data shows, there was a decrease in students' feeling as though they were in an environment where others treated each other, where people were treating each other well. This specifically correlates to the social-emotional learning in social regulation and relationship skills. These two areas, both of the previous mentioned areas actually have an impact on whether students feel like they're doing well in school. So while students answered favorably that they liked school, so there's a question that says, "I like school," they answered yes or no, they answered yes. And that they, and felt safe at school, so they answered favorably to those two areas, there was a slight decrease in students' overall feeling as if they were doing well in school. So this is correlated to all areas of social-emotional learning and is actually a cause for responsiveness. So in this diagram, it's my attempt, bear with me, to convey the interconnectedness of the elements of support present in our elementary buildings. With the top level being student love, learning and achievement, you can see that each layer underneath it is supported by others underneath those. This isn't a depiction of hierarchy or importance, but rather an attempt at trying to create a visual representation of how connected each of the supports in a school actually is and the true level of interdependence that each role has on those surrounding it to be able to successfully provide the support needed to lift student learning and achievement. While my future as a graphic artist probably isn't all that great, I think it could go without saying that we can aptly determine that if any one piece of this diagram would be missing, the others would have to shift and move to continue to provide the support needed. Each of those shifts and moves would result in some level of their current job or some need being left unmet as they shifted to fill the role of that piece that was removed. So as we examined our current model of support, we identified that the behavior intervention support is present in buildings every other day. One building one day, then the other building the next, rotating through the week. This support has been pivotable, pivotal in providing students, services to students who are truly struggling to access skills, social-emotional skills, that would allow them to access classroom learning and the high-quality instruction happening in those rooms. As such, with this support not being consistently in place in each of the elementary buildings, the shifting and moving that I mentioned in the prior slide, it, it occurs. Historically, this system has worked to meet the level of need that was present prior to school, school closures and virtual learning. However, we are noticing that we really need to work to re-establish routines, increase learning stamina and develop social tolerance amidst taking on new learning and academic materials. And we are finding that our students need more support than our current system is designed to provide. As such, when one of the roles is not filled because it is providing support in a different building, the roles that surround it are required to shift, resulting in less effective services and support in multiple roles and leading us in a less-than-progressive spiral. So, adding additional FTE in the behavior intervention area would develop consistency in this position in response to the struggles that we are seeing on a daily basis and that the data collected directly from our students affirmed. We also allow, this will also allow us to follow those interconnected arrows on the previous slides between and across the universal and selected supports within our framework. Following the model implemented by our academic interventionists, we could potentially provide some co-serv, co-teaching in classrooms in the areas of SEL and social-emotional learning that were identified as areas of significant need. I'm not specifically advocating that the behavioral interventionist would be, would be the fix for all of our SEL needs identified currently in our buildings, however, it can be the piece of the equation that would provide consistency to the supports that we know work. So, in conclusion, as we connect all of this information, we know that we have the correct model in place, we have professionals and roles that are making an impact to student learning and we have data that confirms we need more support than we currently have. The request for additional FTE in the behavior intervention positions at the elementary level aligns with all, all aspects of our continuous improvement and implementation efforts and it's a working example of embracing a responsive, nimble approach to meeting immediate student needs. This investment in our children will connect our learning and practice to result in increased student well-being and mental health, which will in turn positively impact student learning and achievement. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
I don't have any specific questions for you.
Okay.
I thought it was a great presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney.
Have you seen like significant changes going from last year to this year?
Um, what we're seeing in behavior, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes. So what we're seeing is that skills that, skills especially in the areas of self-regulation, stamina, learning stamina, tolerance and socialization are not where they typically would be by, after the first quarter of school. And while there's some, some parts of those that are just assumed kids are going to figure out and get, we're realizing we have to be more intentional around the instruction around those. So, where we've typically used culture-climate surveys to kind of guide us and focus our, look at, like, look for, like, where should we focus next? The, this level of culture-climate surveys or this round of culture-climate surveys kind of affirmed what we were seeing. So, we were kind of all, like, we're like, wow, there's, there's a lot of just- So we were kind of all, like, we're like, wow, there's, there's a lot of just needing more breaks and needing more movement and just more, like, students just having to be coached around how to, you know, get along with each other and interact with each other and, and we were seeing that and we were, we were kind of questioning, are we really seeing this or are our expectations too high? And the, the kids, when you asked the kids, they were like, yep, this is what we need, help us. So I, I thought that was an interesting change in how we were able, like, this data actually affirmed, we're like, all right, they are showing it, this is what we're seeing, so we need to respond.
Good question.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hollenberger.
Thank you.
So as Mrs. Hollenberger described, one of the things that we've been trying to, to work through is, is a level of current need. I think in some occasions, we can definitely forecast what needs might be a year in advance or several years in advance, and in other circumstances, we're not able to. And I think part of what Mrs. Hollenberger shared, I think so thoughtfully, was that we've invested heavily in supporting students and supporting families in efforts to help students access learning, to be able to and ready to learn. In our best efforts to begin the school year and with the support of the board, adding those social worker positions have been invaluable, truly, as we started the year. And there was thought that some of what Mrs. Hollenberger shared moments ago would sort of fall in line as kids got back into school and into the routine and, and between family stress and societal stress and, and school actualization and all of those things, there is a need. And I think when you're getting actual data from students, particularly as we as we are, saying that, hey, like, we could use some help here, that's what we would ask you to support in a limited-term basis at this point. And so there is a request in order to make whole the behavior intervention structure that is partially in place and has been for the last couple of years. So we currently have two behavior interventionists serving the elementary levels, and what we would like to request from the board is a limited-term addition of two behavior interventionists so that if we are able to find qualified candidates for those positions, we'd be able to put them in place yet this year because the need is now. It's not something that we can talk about implementing next September and, and lose that time, lose those hours, lose those minutes with those students. So again, the request this evening is for the addition of two behavior interventionists. You'll notice in the, the resolution that it is a limited-term position. We are hopeful that with posting, we'd be able to attract qualified candidates for that limited term, and if not, we, we won't fill those positions that are so vital with people that don't have the skills to do it, but it sure would be nice to see if we could find some help out there in, given our current needs. So if you do have any other specific questions about that, I would be happy to, or I know Mrs. Hollenberger would be happy to as well.
And there's a three-page attachment in Board Docs for us as well.
Yeah, and that's available to the public as well, and that's the, that's the, the form or the format that we use when we're asking to add positions. So you'll recall from last year as we worked through additions that we made this year or adjustments, that that's the same format that was used, so that will become more common to you as we work together over the years.
So if these positions are needed now, is there a chance that they're going to be needed next year, the year after?
I think there could be. I think, I think what I was trying to describe a few minutes ago is, is about program and staffing being responsive to need. And so one of the things we would like to do is, is see, A, if we were able to, to get the candidates that I was just describing, what is it that we're able to do this year? What is it that we're able to do with that amount of additional support in order to bring some of these, I guess, gaps for lack of better word, a little bit closer to being closed? One of the things that we did not want to do is ask the board for ongoing positions at this time because, as you know, through the scheduling process, through the visioning process, through anticipating next year, it's not uncommon for us to come to the board with reductions or additions based on those changes. That typically happens in the spring, typically, typically in, in March, April, so we didn't want to put you in a position where you were making decisions now that may well be bundled or packaged with different needs later in the year. So again, this gives us the potential for some student assistance in the immediacy and then for us to come back to you in spring with whatever it is that we might be looking to adapt for the upcoming school year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Is there any discussion amongst the board about the resolution for us?
This is not additional funding beyond the current budget.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, I think if the kids need it.
Yeah, I mean, it's important to address the gap now rather than wait and figure out there's a bigger gap later.
Right.
Much, much bigger issue potentially at that point.
All right, let's entertain the motion.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approve the addition of two limited-term elementary positions, 1.0 FTE, behavior interventionist, effective immediately, estimated to be a total cost of $170,000 per year.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Nickram, a second by Mrs. Bookta, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes, and that passes. We're getting some much-needed aid for our students, and we'll be moving forward to the December board meeting date change. This is, we have a member who has a professional obligation. This is why we're addressing the date and changing the date or entertaining the idea of changing the date. Is there any discussion among the board? We can go ahead and entertain the motion if there isn't any?
Be resolved that the December board meeting be conducted on Monday, December 13th, 2021, starting at 6:30 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Nickram, a second by Mrs. Reynolds, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes.
That does allow me to attend two more winter programs, I think, perhaps Rockwell this year, so.
Boom. We, we will have clerk, Amy, Mrs. Reynolds will review the timelines and procedure for filing papers for seeking election to the Board of Education.
All right, the spring election of 2022, and the election of the school board will be held on Tuesday, April 5th of 2022. The spring election will be for two seats on the school board. The incumbents currently holding these seats are Mark Chaney and Adam Paul. Anyone interested in running for these seats may contact the district superintendent and Board of Education Administrative Assistant, Lisa Haas, in the Luther Administration Center at 201 Park Street or by phone at 920-563-7807, or visit the school district's website at www.fortschools.org for more information. Those interested will be given election materials, including an election schedule and WASB guide for candidates and the necessary forms. All of the information and forms are also available on our school district's website. The deadline for filing for the ballot access documents include the declaration of candidacy form and the campaign registration statement is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. The deadline for incumbents to file a notification of non-candidacy is 5:00 PM on Friday, December 24th, 2021. If a primary election is needed, it would be held on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. The election, the elected board member will take office on Monday, April 25th, 2022.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Reynolds. And we can move forward to agenda items for future board meetings.
Uh, yes, so we'll be looking at approval of four K provider contracts. You'll be receiving the annual school safety drill reports that are due by the end of the calendar year, the financial projection and budget assumptions, the Wisconsin OPEB trust annual review and report, another update on school board election information. We'll also be receiving a strategic plan update as well as some initial survey result data from the community survey that concluded on Monday, of which we had 998 surveys completed. So statistically, that's a great representation, and just to give you a taste, it's a demographically representative and statistically a representative sample of the community. We fell too short of making it even thousand, which would have been great, but we're thankful and appreciative of everyone who took their time to, to share their thoughts there. So the Donovan Group and others will be here next, next Thursday, next month to share that information with you as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott, and that has brought us to everybody's favorite resolution.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourns.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Mrs. Reynolds, second by Mr. Nickram, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are out of here at 8:29. Thank you very much for showing up, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.